Great, so I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen here in Millville, Massachusetts to order at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, September 26th. We do have a full board, but I thought we'd do introductions because I know people might not know everyone, so.
Richard Bremmelt.
Andrew Allard.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso Town Administrator.
Okay, great, and now we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter, the announcements?
Just three things, one, a reminder that the BMR School Department CPAC has a Truckapalooza October 2nd, 12 to 4 at the high school, we had talked about that at the last meeting. Separately, I just want to point out, up on our website, you should find a MetaComet Emergency Communications Center, which is our dispatch center, they're having career days on Tuesdays, open interviews in October, 9 to 2 at MetaComet, which is in Norfolk Police Station, and there are our emergency dispatch, we put something, Cherry put it up on the two basic Facebook pages as well, I'm on the Board of Directors there, and one of the challenges is having recruiting and retention like we have with our police department challenges as well, so they're constantly in need of very capable people, and it's a good career opportunity, so I recommend people pay attention to that. Lastly, there's a Zoommobile at the Millville Senior Center, October 1st, 10 to 11, I think the sign up for that, you have to go through the Senior Center Director, but I think the sign up time has lapsed, if they have a spot, it might be worth going.
Okay, great, and since we have a lot of, I'm going to jump to new business and appointments because we have a lot of people here for that, and I thought we can then go back up to the correspondence and minutes and things like that, so just because people may not want to stay the whole time for our invigorating, for our selectmen meeting. Okay, so we'll start with the Planning Board, I understand it's a joint meeting, so Pam, do you want to come up and then you'll need to open your meeting?
Can I open a meeting by myself? Well, I think.
So if you don't have a quorum, the appointment can still be made as we check with council, so you have your strong recommendation from your board, right?
We do, yeah, okay.
The Planning Board would still need to make a vote, though, at a meeting of theirs. We don't have to do it at the same, you did already?
Yep, we did.
Okay.
Okay. So you're appointing Jason Mail?
Mail.
Okay, and then Pam Williams, are they both here? Would you like to come up?
They're both here.
Great.
Jason is, the Planning Board recommends that we appoint Jason to the open Planning Board seat, and Pam Williams to the open Associate Planner seat.
Okay.
So what's in there is your?
Associate Planner, it says Associate Member here, is it?
Associate Member of the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Associate Member of the Planning Board.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
And the first appointment for Jason would be until the next election, the Associate Member would be through June 30th of 23.
Correct, okay. So the next election, so it'll be April, we'll just say next election.
You're right.
In case it moves. Okay, great, so I did review all your resumes and things like that, which is great, for us, thank you so much for volunteering, if you've been watching Board of Selectmen meetings, you know that at every meeting, we ask for volunteers to come forward because we have like light boards and light participation in many committees, so thank you so much for agreeing to participate, and I just have just one or two questions for both of you, and it's the same questions, so just what was your interest in the Planning Board, and what made you want to step forward, so Pam, I'll start with you.
My main interest was, I saw a couple of postings on both town websites, and I said, you know, that might be something that I'm interested in, I'd like to try and help the town, I'm new to the town, I'm retired, have time, so thought it would be something to look into.
Great. Jason, same question.
Kind of the same thing, you know, I do pay attention to the Planning Board meetings and the Board of Select meetings, and you guys are always asking for help, and I know a couple of the Planning Board meetings that they weren't able to get a full vote because they didn't have a quorum, and I thought this is not a lot to ask of me, and I do want to support the town, I've been a resident since 2008, kids love this town, my wife and I love this town, so we wanted to participate.
You moved here when I moved here, I moved here in 2008, too. Andrew and Richard, any other questions for Pam and Jason?
Do either of you have any past experience with the Planning Board or anything of that sort or nature?
I do not, I've never been, I've watched the Planning Board meetings, but I have never, I worked for 34 years for the Postal Service, I am a landlord, and I have, I've never had to go before a Planning Board, but, you know, I've heard people talk about it, not in Millville, in Marlboro, in Framingham.
The only experience I've had is obviously applying for permits, that sort of thing, other than that, no, just from watching and learning.
I have nothing else really to add, it sounds like it pretty well covers it.
Okay.
We're excited to have them on board.
Yes.
The first time in several years that we'll have a full Planning Board.
Very exciting, congratulations Pam. There's also general Planning Board update on the agenda, is there anything else Pam that you had, no?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Can Mr. Jack mention anything to you?
No, it's just the opportunity for the boards to kind of meet and find out how this board could help you, and vice versa, what the issues are, and educate you, that's all, but save that for another date, and maybe bring Jack, because he's a good resource, every time I talk to him, I learn something.
And I think, I think at another, at a future meeting, we might have better updates to give you actually about the Planning Department and things like that, so.
Okay, great, so looking for a motion to appoint Jason?
So I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Mail as a member of the Millville Planning Board until the next election.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion, all those in favor? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, and then for Pamela?
So I make a motion to appoint Pamela Williams as Associate Member to the Planning Board through June 30th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard, any further discussion?
Aye.
Richard, Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, thank you so much.
And just a note, you have to get sworn in with the town clerk before you can be a voting member, take action, but it's really great, you can make arrangements with her during regular office hours of the town.
Great, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Congrats.
So you're welcome to stay, but you can leave, too, if you want to, so Millville Cultural Council, still Pam?
Still me.
Yep.
Don't talk to me in town, or you're going to end up doing something on one of our boards.
Please do.
Great recruitment tactic.
That's right.
I feel very short.
So we're here from the Cultural Council to appoint Joyce Indelicado, am I saying that right, to our board. So similar question, Joyce, what made you interested in the Cultural Council?
I'm new to Millville, we just moved here a year ago, and I've lived in a couple of other towns previously, and I never got involved in anything, and I really regretted that, because I never felt like really connected to where I lived, so I thought this was an opportunity to do it, and I've seen the ads on Facebook, so I have the time now to be involved in the town a bit more.
Great, we actually just posted a video that Emil Berthellet did on a lot of things, so there's a lot of history in the town, it was really cool, really well done, so, all right. Andrew, Richard, any questions?
Probably same as Andrew, have you had any experience in the other towns, or just nothing at all?
No, I mean, that's kind of why I'm here, finally I have a chance to do it, I'm retired, so I have a kind of flexible schedule, or so-called flexible schedule, so.
Okay, great, well, we like hearing that you have a flexible schedule.
Yeah.
And have a lot of time to help us out.
Yes.
Those are two very positive things.
Exactly, I probably shouldn't have said that, right?
I'm not going to comment on that. All right, so looking for a motion to appoint Joyce Indelicado?
I'll make a motion to appoint Joyce Indelicado to the Millville Cultural Council through June 30th, 2025.
Great.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
And if I could, on behalf of the Cultural Council, our great season is open now through, I believe, October 17th, and if you're interested in helping out with the Cultural Council, we do still have open positions available, and you can reach out to our Cultural Council to meet us.
Okay, great, thanks, thank you. Okay, appointment of Sean Hollis?
And I have materials that came in late from Chief Coop, but they were very useful.
Hot off the presses.
Hot off the presses.
I was wondering, I was like, did I miss this in the packet?
No, so he was a late addition, the chief got it after we, so in time to amend the agenda, to include this, and we just got information, which is useful, and I'll leave it to the chief to review that if you want, I highlighted some key parts of his letter of interest.
Sorry, I'm up to you. So Sean came to us during our last hiring process, and Sean was an Air Force veteran, a veteran of Arizona Corrections, and various other jobs throughout, so well-rounded, he's done civilian stuff, and also some law enforcement, he came over here, most recently worked for a college out west, and a couple of the small police departments, and then he came to us trying to get a little closer to his home, and we've picked him up, that's why I put him on the appointment, he has a associate's degree in criminal justice, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, he's in a master's program for Homeland Security as we speak, so I think well-rounded, and will be a good asset to the town.
So I have no questions, actually, once I hear veterans and degrees, then I'm kind of good.
So he'll be fulfilling a part-time role in chief?
Yes, correct, part-time.
Okay, do you, do you work any other positions, or are you going to primarily focus on Millville?
I'll be primarily focused on Millville, this will be my, this is what I'll be focused on, Millville and going to school to get my, like I said, my master's, yes.
Okay.
100%.
You've completed the Bridge Academy as well.
Yes, I have, I've completed the Bridge Academy.
That wasn't messed up, thank you.
Yes, yes, so.
That's a huge end of taking, yeah.
Yes.
Jennifer, a motion?
So I make a motion to appoint Sean Hollis as part-time police officer through June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, and you'll have to get sworn in with the town clerk, that's good. Yeah, sure, she'll be here, yeah, that's great, welcome aboard.
Okay, so then moving down, I was going to jump down to considerations of 66 Ironstone, because I know Lorna Ward, who's on the call, is here to comment on that, so I know minimally of that, so Peter, do you want to give?
So what's in your packets includes some of the letters as a result of inspections by the various folks, and, you know, our zoning enforcement officer slash building inspector, Joe Fitzpatrick, who's here this evening, it's been inspected by the Board of Health, and you've seen the letters, and, you know, identification of violations in time to correct them, and also you see in the packets complaints by various residents about the property, and there have been violation letters sent to the stakeholders, I'll call them, because the property apparently is owned by folks who are deceased for some time now, we believe we've identified the, I think Joe identified in his most recent violation letter, a next-of-kin, Michael Barbary, Christine Pontus, the executor, Richard Pontus, the tenant, I think we have an interested party online here, Lorna Ward, I'm not sure exactly the relationship, but in any event, you'll see the correspondence and so forth, so from my perspective, absent, you know, there's been numerous violations cited over the years, numerous complaints cited over the years, some progress forward, a lot of progress backwards over the years, and so it's reached the point where I think it's in the best interests of the town to proceed down the path of the public nuisance bylaw, and so tonight is just to talk about, bring that to your attention, give you a heads up, and at some future meeting, possibly as early as the next meeting, you'll be getting from me a memo that recommends that this does in fact represent a public nuisance, and then what would be required is you'd have a 14-day, a minimum of a 14-day public notice of a public hearing, which you might not be able to do in time for the October 17th meeting, if I think about it, because it does require, you know, publication, and so, all that sort of thing, so I might get into the, you know, the November meeting, and in the meantime, it sounds like, particularly from the nice lady here who we see on the video, that there is some efforts to get things going, so by the time you get to the meeting of the public hearing, and in that meeting, you would probably have a, an executive session to determine what, if any, orders of conditions you might do, and we would have council there in that executive session, and in order of conditions, you, as a Board of Selectman, you are the ultimate authority at taking action here, and your order of condition, as an example, would say, please remediate all of the remaining violations at this point in time, and do that by such and such a date, or, or some other thing that you might choose to do, which might be, we'd like to see you do A, B, C, and D by such and such a date, and then we'll circle back and so forth, and all while the time is passing, there may be progress which will be, you know, to the benefit of the property owner, because at the end of the day, it does put the property into a challenging situation, should the board, when the board takes action, you know, there will be, there's no turning back on that, I guess is really where that gets to, and your ultimate remedy is that, to the extent that your order of condition, conditions aren't met, you then can affect those condition, the order of conditions that you've required, and the cost of that would be a lien on the property, okay, and, so, anyway, that's, that's sort of the heads-up and the Cliff Notes version, and you certainly had some reading matter on the, on the thing, so that's where that's at, so the process will continue.
Okay.
So I went back and read through a lot of the material, it looks like this dates back to 1995, at the earliest?
Yeah.
Yep.
And so it seems as though this has transitioned a lot of boards, a lot of building inspectors.
Right.
There's definitely been a lot of effort put into this, was there ever a memorandum of agreement between the town and the property owners at any point, or some sort of strategic plan?
I'm not aware of any, I've not heard of any.
I think this is what we have documented.
This is what we have for documents?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Joe and Chief Coop, do you want to give any updates around the property or anything? You don't have to if you don't want to, I'm just offering.
I wasn't prepared for that.
That's okay.
Certainly Joe could go first.
Okay. I just thought Joe might be afraid to come up by himself, and if you had the police chief with him, he'd feel safer.
We'll just rough it out. As you know, I've been up to the property since we get the original complaint multiple times, I talked to Richard, and we started making some progress, some things were moved out of there, and what's going on, then it just kind of stalled, so the last time I talked to Richard, I just said, we got to get, you know, I've given a lot of time for you guys to get this at least going in the right direction, and we just, we just seemed to hear just a roadblock in the road, and that's it, we weren't going any further.
Can I pause you for a minute, Joe?
Sure.
I think she's having difficulty hearing, I don't know if we're muted or not, she's been trying to signal us, can you hear us?
I can, I was just trying to interject, I'm always trying to talk, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
So at that point, I talked to Richard, and I just said, look, I'm going to send the letter out, and pretty much, we got to, we got to get a resolution to this problem, because it's just going on and on, and we just got to take care of it, I mean, it's, that's pretty much what I got.
Lorna, you wanted to say something?
I do, I always do, thank you, and by the way, thank you for the length of the meeting. I just want to say that, yes, I know they have been in touch with Richard and my, my sibling, my, I put down property, and I'm thankful that you guys reached out to me, I was able to get the letter, but I wanted to know who I can speak to about, I am putting a plan in place, and who do I talk to about that, and, you know, sort of asking change.
I think that would be Joe.
So, well, at this stage, you'd best email back and forth to me, and I want to stick to emails, Lorna, to keep everything documented properly, to protect everybody's interest, to make sure there's no lack of clarity, okay, if you could do that, that would be helpful, and that will help the board to see progress, you know, if you have a plan in place, and things are happening, that's only going to benefit, you know, the end result here for everybody.
Yeah, I'm handling the situation now, and everyone involved is lovely and helpful, but I actually do have more resources to be able to help, so very moving forward with the plan, I put something in place, and I will be in touch with you offline, on the computer. Excellent. If there's any questions, I'll go.
We haven't any other questions right now, is there anyone else in the room who wanted to speak on the matter, who is here? Yeah, please.
I've lived next door for 95.
Please have this, if you don't mind having a seat, and then just giving your name, if you don't mind.
My name's Paul.
Oh, hi.
So anyway, I have lived next door since 95, I've made various complaints over the years, and things have come in, things have gone out, and it's to the point now where there's a rat problem, and I'm not living with rats, there are hundreds of tires on the property, nothing but just sitting there, I mean, we all have well water, there's vehicles on the property, which I'm sure the seals are broken, and that stuff is leaching into the ground, there's refrigeration units, I have seen everything from furnaces with mercury switches in them, all kinds of things, I mean, there are fuel cans just laying on the property, laying on the ground, whether there's something in them or not, I don't know, but there is so much hazardous material just leaching into the aquifer, right there, I haven't had my water tested, but I see a film on top of it, so when I do have it tested, it's going to be an issue, I don't drink it, but the rats are elastro, I mean, I'm not going to, and that's where they're coming from, I mean, not only that, there's piles of wood which attract carpenter ants, and, I mean, I used to pay, I used to pay somebody to come in a few times a year, just to treat for that, and he'd tell me they're coming from next door, I've seen everything from homeless people sleeping in the backyard for a year and a half, that's finally stopped, they would come in every night around 9:30 and leave every morning around 10:30, I've had it, you know, it's just devaluing my property.
Yeah.
The properties around it, and, I mean, there's, you can't even see half of the stuff that's back there right now, because it's so overgrown, you know, all the weeds are grown over it, I mean, there's piles of bicycles, there's metal everywhere, which is just rusting and leaching into the, into the ground again, you know, I've seen them changing oil out there without putting anything under the vehicle, you know, not in a while, but I mean, this has just been going on over the years, and I'm done, I mean, like I said, it's really devaluing my property, it's not even worth it for me to fix my property, because I couldn't even get the money back out of it with that being next door, I've seen them pull their wellhead off and pull the line for the water out, leaving it in the driveway for three months, I think that was last year, so whether the house is even habitable, I have no idea, I've never been inside, but I'm not putting up with this any longer, you know, if the town doesn't take care of it, I'm going to have to get my own attorney, or wherever I've got to go, but this, this has got to be taken care of, and I'm not the only one, and there's other neighbors that have made complaints, but I mean, I'm just, I'm probably the most vocal one, I'm the one right there, but, yeah, like I said, when I have to go out and buy rat bait stations, that's a little beyond, I mean, we all get field mice out here in the country, I expect it, that's nothing, but I mean, this has been going on way too long, there's no need for it, none, and, I mean, there's always vehicles coming in, vehicles coming out, and I've seen it before, yes, he's moved out maybe four or five vehicles that have been sitting there for about five years, those went maybe two months ago, and I've seen that happen before, and then all of a sudden, they come back in, and it starts getting more and more, and if I don't say anything, you know, nothing gets done, and if I let it go, it happens, there'll be like, two people go out there, somebody will tell them to hide the stuff behind the house from the Board of Health, and nothing else gets done, nothing gets done, you know, I mean, there's still, there's a Ford F-150 sitting out in the back, that's been sitting there for so long that it's actually sunken down to its rim, there's another blue utility vehicle that has been sitting on that property, it's a box truck, which is probably full of all kinds of other debris, that's been sitting on that property since I've owned it, so it's been moved once from one side of the property to the other, at one time, there was a bulldozer that sat there for over 20 years, that got moved out a few years ago, all that stuff, like I said, is just rusting into the ground, and just, you know, enough's enough.
Yeah, well, I hope that this being an agenda item and us putting a meeting together for it shows that we are taking it seriously, I, Peter and I meet before each Board of Selectmen meeting and go over the packet, just see if there are questions, and when I saw this letter from 1995, I was shocked, because when we spoke on the phone, you said I've been dealing with this for 30 years, and I thought, you know, maybe it's 10, and it just feels like 30, you know, because I-
It's not quite 30, but it's close.
It's 27, it's very close, so I was just shocked, when this letter was out, I was still a teenager, that's, it was a long time ago, and so I, that I just found shocking, that it's been since 1995, and then you can see the other issues in 14, and 16, and 18, and those are just the ones I can remember off the top of my head.
I mean, my neighbor across the street found a, his dog came over with a rat in its mouth, so, yeah, it's an issue, I mean, it's not something that's going to go away on its own.
Yeah.
You know, it's got to be, and the mosquitoes besides, I mean, just the tires sitting there with stagnant water in them, you know, there's breeding grounds right there.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, more of a health hazard than-
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I think we, you know, we want to move forward with an amicable solution, but we're prepared to be heavy-handed if we need to be, so, or at least investigate being heavy-handed if we need to be.
Well, we're going to follow the process, and I will be submitting that recommendation to you, and I think you can see in your packets, you know, it's not for lack of effort, I mean, Joe's been out there, as he say, says many times, he's got a couple of letters, one in June with citations and so forth, and then he went back in August, and here we are, he sent me most recently his summary that when he went back to check based on the conditions he gave a month for, there was no significant, significant improvement, so he's recommended that we follow this process, we have the Board of Health, you know, had gone out in June, sent a letter, and their follow-up was, as of last week, they put in violation fines, so, you know, this is not an unserious matter that the town needs to-
I know that Richard cleaned up a lot of stuff yesterday, I mean, I saw him, but I mean, it was stuff that really, wasn't really any lawn mowers and snow blowers, I mean, there's multiple, but I mean, I don't know what he did with them, I just saw him putting everything to the front shelving and stuff, it wasn't stuff that I was really even complaining about, which is more the tires and the vehicles and the refrigeration and the scrap metal, that's more of the issue, but I know he cleaned that stuff out yesterday, but other than that, I haven't seen anything else move out of there as far as like tires, and tires are going to, tires are going to be a problem because they're hazardous material when you go to dump them, so it's like $10 a tire.
So I think this will be the first of, this is the first time it's on our agenda, but it's going to be on subsequent meetings, Peter?
Yes.
I'll be asking for an update, so Peter and Lorna can connect, and if you want to come to our next meeting, which is a week from today, and the next one's on the 17th, more than welcome, and we'll be getting updates and continuing to move it forward, because I, I don't, you know, I, one of the nice things I think about Millville is because we're all kind of, you know, you're spaced out, you have some privacy, so, you know, I kind of like live and let live, you know, but if it's, you're getting rats in your house, and people like-
Well, that area of town is more of a village, and everything's gross, I mean, there's only, you know, maybe 15 feet in between the houses- Well, that area of town is more of a village and everything's gross. I mean, there's only, you know, maybe fifteen feet in between the houses, twenty at the most, you know?
Yeah, no, I know. I know it's closer there, but I'm, you know, we're a small town and I'm kinda like, eh, we can just leave everybody alone. But once it's impacting other people, then that's, that's not okay.
Right.
It's not okay. Any other comments? Questions?
I will say that, uh, I did take a little field trip out there, and, uh, he was nice enough to invite me out. It's gotta be hundreds of tires that are back there accumulating, you know, mosquitoes and water. Hundreds of propane tanks and miscellaneous fuel cans. Those are probably the biggest points of contention right there. You know, I think a couple of vehicles, you know, they can be dealt with, but, um, it's the tires, the stagnant water and, and all the fuel cans, so.
And the rusting metal.
Yeah.
And the vehicles too are a problem because then, uh, I mean, the seals break, they just leak the fluids into the ground.
Yeah.
You know? So, that's an issue too.
I think, I think a big improvement is just getting the tires a start with.
Yeah.
That'd be a huge one.
Uh, on the property, are the vehicles all registered or not? Okay. Does the Board of Assessors?
Well, Lorna can answer that question.
I believe, I actually did inquire about that since it was in the letter. And I believe that everything is registered except for two vehicles. But I'm working on either getting those vehicles removed or registered. And we are working on a, a plan and to put everything in action to deal with the tires, to deal with the propane tanks. So, yeah, this is, um, it's now brought to my attention, so it's gonna be, I'm gonna be here immediately.
Okay.
There is multiple campers up there too.
Okay.
So, there's at least, I'd say there's probably three of them that are up there.
No, there's only two now. One of them is old. They, they've removed, uh, one, one large one. I think the other one's gone. There is still one that's been sitting there for about five years, but there's one that's hiding under some brush. It's a old pop-up, but it's all dilapidated. It's fallen in on itself. So, I mean, I don't think you can call it a camper anymore. It's just rotted metal.
Yeah.
Was the Board of Assessors brought in for the vehicles?
No.
Okay.
And there's other, there are others. There's another, um, the garage that's on the space. I have no idea what's in there. But it looks like it's being held up by the trees that grew along the foundation. And behind it, there's also another, um, fiberglass body from a truck. It looks like it's fiberglass anyway. It's got a hole in it. But, um, I have no idea what's being stored, and I'm sure there's plenty of hazardous, these are paint or whatever has been in there. It's been in there forever. And those cans have got to be rotting out and just leaching. So, I mean, something's gotta be looked at because it's starting to get into the water. I can tell you that now. That's all I have.
Okay. No, thank you for coming. Anything else, anyone? Anyone else want to speak? Chief Coop, do you want to speak? Please?
I was just wondering if, uh, Richard, through Lorna, would get us onto his property so we could see exactly what's going on. Just thinking about, you know, she said there's only a few unregistered cars and such, which would fall into me eventually. Uh, maybe we could get Lorna to mediate some kind of agreement where we could get a good inspection on the property.
Lorna, did you hear that request? So, there is a request, um, from?
Here. Now, what was the question?
So, uh, Chief Coop, he's our police chief. He was wondering if he could go onto the property and look around, and he would like you to.
Oh, no, I need to find out what's going on first because I don't even know what's happening on that property right now. So, what I've been told is there are two unregistered vehicles. Is that true? I believe so, but is that true? I'm not sure. If it is true, whether it is or isn't, I'm gonna remedy it because I know that it's not okay. I just haven't been in touch for twenty years because my husband, we're active duty, so we travel. Um, so, we're never there. But now that I'm aware of the situation, I need to find out what's going on before I. Michael and Richard are lovely, and they've been living there for a very long time without me having knowledge of what's going on. But I need to know what's going on first, if you don't mind. Like, that's imperative. Just so that way I can put them with a plan in action. Because if there are, let's just say there's three or four vehicles. I have no idea how many. I was told there are two. I can get that taken care of in an afternoon. But I also need to know what's the reality and what's going on. So, um, if they just give me a, a little bit of time to kinda dig in and figure it out myself, then I can move ahead and then report. And I don't mind meeting with people and letting you know and taking pictures and all that. But I need to move ahead and, I need to get some traction on my own first without, you know, without anybody kind of going in and going, and then it snowballing away from me. I need to be able to control it because, you know, I, this is a property that I, I lived on since I was born. And I lived there until I left school and then moved away. But my, it has taken care of my family, and I do, I'd like to honor the property and the neighborhood by taking care of it instead of just leaving it for somebody else's problem. And that's what's happened over the years. So, I'm, I'm actually taking responsibility for this at this point and trying to deal with it.
Okay.
So, just could I clarify, Lorna? Um, so you're a daughter of the owners of record who are deceased. Is that, uh, that what I am to understand?
I'm a regional Barbara family member, yes.
And so we have an executor identified. So, the question is, I, and I'd have to follow up with our legal counsel. You know, your role in this and your authority in all of this. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but we also have to deal with whoever the actual authorized individuals are to handle the property. I don't know if that's you or how you work that out amongst your family members.
Yeah, I can get that. I can get that right and so that, you know, that you understand that I'm okay. I am the one to deal with. Unfortunately, uh, the executor is, she's in her seventies now, and she's still working, uh, she's a nurse. She works with COVID. And so she's still doing Rhode Island complete, large state mandates with COVID, so she's very busy. She's seventy-four. She's still working. And, uh, yeah, so I, I've been, I told her I would take it over and handle this, and that's what I'm, I'm studying.
Okay, so I think, so the other part of that is just to follow on to the chief. You know, when we have, we will need access to the property. And we will need the authority to have access to go on to that property, whether it's the chief or our zoning enforcement officer or the Board of Health, uh, throughout this process, which I think will help your cause to see progress. But we would need that from the rightful, rightfully authorized individual. Right now, that, for my take, the only person would be the, um, you know, the executor Christine Pontus. So, you have to clear that up if you could.
Yeah, we'll clear all of that up. But, but as of right now, I am the one handling the property and the, the moving forward. So, I would like to be, I would like to, to go through me. Christine will just hand it over to me because she's very busy, like I said. But, um, you'll see action will be, I, I'm actually action oriented, so.
Sounds good.
Great.
All right.
Uh, just one other thing.
Please.
I understand that Lorna's trying to do this, but I think you're gonna need something that, like a, uh, power of attorney to put her, so she can make any kind of legal judgment calls on it. Because right now, you're dealing with somebody that has best interests at heart, but legally, I don't think they can make the calls.
Right.
Okay. Lorna, I'm not sure if you heard that, but there's a suggestion that you get power of attorney over this property from the executor. And that would make things great. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else on the thing, on sixty-six Ironstone, going once, going twice? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. And Lorna, thank you for attending. Um, it's really helpful, and I'm hopeful we can get to an amicable resolution moving forward. So, Lorna, you're welcome to stay in the meeting, but if you wanna drop, that's okay too. Um, okay. And then, who else do we have? Ah, Sarah. Oh, no, was Sarah doing MVB?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so why don't we go back? Sorry, Sarah, I skipped over that, didn't I? Adoption, yeah, D. Adoption of the Town and Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update. That's seven D on the agenda. And then we'll go to ARPA after that, since Sarah has, okay, there. And then, and then I think we can go back to in order. Okay.
Well, thank you for taking me out on board.
Thanks for being here, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. No, I'm glad to be back again. Uh, I hope you all had a great summer. So, yeah, for sure. So, I did have an opportunity to talk, um, to the, um, CMRPC representative who is finishing up, um, for Mary Hannah, whom we worked with through the process in terms of getting the plan drafted and doing the public listening sessions. Um, I know there was a few questions about, you know, how to sort of move forward and any sort of potential liability that the town might face in regards to the action items that are in the plan. And so she assured me, um, so this is a combined plan. So, I guess that's first to like, uh, you know, for the record, for people to understand, is that there's the MVP, which is a state-required document. And the HVP, which is a federally required document. The federally required document, um, does need to be updated every five years in order to access MEMA and FEMA funding. Um, the state-required document does not have any expiration date, um, but does need to precede any sort of action grants, um, being applied for at the state level. So, it's really, there's no, um, prevention, um, in accessing funding due to lack of progress. There's no sort of, um, penalties, uh, for lack of progress. It's just all about, you know, sort of documenting any efforts to outcomes that are made in between the, you know, five years that the plan would be sort of active at the federal level. Um, it's really a proactive, like, planning, um, exercise. And just an important document to, you know, identify those current conditions and then, you know, potential for future challenges and how we can move forward. So, um, working with other boards and towns potentially to set up maybe a regional grant, um, for competitiveness. That was one thing, um, that the CMRPC representative thought would be a good idea. Action plan grants will open in the spring. There will be an expression of interest this winter. So, I'm looking forward to working with her in terms of, you know, getting into that EOI process, kind of talking cross-functionally about what other communities within, um, you know, the region are doing, any kind of, um, border activities, so to speak, with the other towns at border of Millville. And the last thing is that the FEMA and MEMA grants are being extended until December for this year because there is a lot of funding from ARPA that's coming down through all these different organizations. Definitely a unprecedented, um, amount of funding that's out there. So, there may be an opportunity for us to even sort of pick off some low-hanging fruit from this plan, um, for submission before September, just to see. You know, um, since they are extending it, it's clear that they're, they're needing, um, grant proposals. Um, and that would be a ninety percent federal with a ten percent municipal share if we were to go for a MEMA, a FEMA, FEMA grant for this winter. So.
So, you said September. That would need to be done by December? What was on the FEMA-MEMA grants?
The FEMA-MEMA is open until December.
December thirty-first or December first?
December thirty-first is my understanding.
And then what would be some examples? Because I know we get like generators for things. Are there other things like within, I'm just thinking, public safety opportunities?
I think most of this is more related though to storm water management types of things.
Yeah, hazard mitigation, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But we could definitely, again, they're looking for additional proposals. So, I think that we could make a case maybe for some of those, um, you know, preventative measures potentially.
And just to reiterate a little bit, um, the acronyms, uh, municipal vulnerability preparedness. It's MVP. And that's what.
Thank you.
You all sat through, and a number of other folks sat through a number of meetings. I sat in a bunch of them as well and came up with a lot of the meat of the report here, right? And then separately, or this is then combined with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is the federal thing that the Emergency Management Director, uh, you know, Chief Liard is the ultimate goalkeeper on that, I guess, right? And so it was an update to that. And what you're being asked to adopt under this, uh, certificate of adoption tonight is, is called the Millver, Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan, a lot of which incorporates the MVP efforts. How's that?
Yes.
And, and you've confirmed that there are no, like, in this, as you see, there's a plan of action. And then there's also, I think in the later pages of the report, it's a ninety-some page report, you know, uh, action plans and so forth and what can be done and who might be responsible. But as Sarah's confirmed, there's no real commitment to do that. And this is, I would construe this whole thing as an ongoing work in progress. But also, by getting the adoption, puts you available to go chase funding for various things that might make sense for the town, right?
Perfect summary.
Okay. No, that all sounds great. So, then the storm water, because I just wrote that. So, I wrote down Brian Malali's name next to that. So, so for example, if there is a road that floods every time it rains, this would be an opportunity.
This would be it. Yes, so.
Chase culverts and funding for fixing the road and so forth.
So, the highway surveyor, the fire chief. Yes. And, and, you know, myself to, to help, you know, kind of pull everything together, I think are gonna be the key players in sort of moving forward and, you know, potentially obtaining funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, the other, sorry, which one you mentioned was primarily Chief Liard? So, we have this.
Well, so there's a whole, you know, if you, if you, at some point, when you got a spare time and you're wide awake, you can study the pages ninety-one through ninety-six. But, you know, it says, you know, the objective, address current storm water drainage issues, you know? And all of that's pretty much highway. Address roadway erosion things. That's, you know, that's generally highway. Ensure availability of water for fire suppression, right? That's, you know, fire department, fire departments. That's why Chief Liard and Brian Malali are the key guys. Maintain readiness and response cap, capacities of Millville's emergency services, you know, Chief Liard, as well as Police Department. Protect the natural environment and ecosystem services. That's Open Space and Rec Committee. I don't know who we have on that, but we probably, you know? But that sort of thing. There you go. You know, protect water quality and so forth. Reduce power outages. That's Tree Warden, which is, you know, an off, offshoot if you, it's an independently elected person. But, you know, there's a lot of work for the Tree Warden identified here. You know, so there's, there's, there's some other good things. Like, all of those came out of the MVP process.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, and I mean, the processes overlap so much, they really kind of blur together. And since the one document, it suffices for both the state and federal agencies, they'll just be pulling any references from that combined document.
Okay.
And if you look at Sarah's arm, her left arm, it's been twisted a little bit, but she's, uh, she was on sabbatical a bit. And she's back with us with enthusiasm, uh, as time allows for, in the ARPA administrator role, as well as in this process of these sorts of things, chasing all these things. And she's very good at it. So, I'm excited to have twisted her arm further to make her say uncle.
Thank you.
I am happy to be back. Thank you. I, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So, quick question. So, for the storm water thing, would that just be directly to the drains themselves? Or would it also kind of include the roads, like if there?
No, it could include the roads because like from, you know, our discussions in terms of like the listening sessions and the planning processes, you know, we identified where the road was impacted and how the, it could be sort of holistically looked at in terms of resolution.
And, and even if you sort of pick your spots, um, of where you wanna do some storm water management, and you might pick those spots to be on crummy roads, and the end result is you've addressed the storm water issues as well as in remed, you know, the end result is you get a nice road too. So, and that's all fair funding, use of funding, I guess.
Did Hill Street get a lot of flooding, Andrew?
Oh, I was, I was thinking, there's a couple of places on Chestnut that I know flood that don't have any drains near them, but I know they usually flood like with rainstorms and stuff. So, that's, and there's probably other stores.
Those are mentioned in our process.
Yeah, those actually are mentioned in the.
Yeah, so that's what I was kind of thinking of, like, those would be included or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
So, I think, so if that's grant, we need to be by the end of the year. It might make sense, Peter, for me, you, Brian, and Sarah to meet soon and be like, look, we have this opportunity. Can you give us five?
Places and what you, what the needs are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great.
Fixes would be, okay. We'll chase them down.
Especially because this could be, and this is ninety, just to be, that's the ninety percent federal, ten percent us. So, that's like practically free.
Short money.
It's ninety percent off.
Really great.
This is how I buy almost everything. I'm like, hey, it was on sale.
It's the clothes I wear. It's the clothes I wear. Tie, I've got that way.
So true.
Leave it here in Millville.
Okay.
So you have to do an adoption of that thing. If you want to read and sign.
That would be great.
Or if you want Sarah to read it, she'd be happy to read it.
Sure, I can read it.
I had to put you on the spot.
I can read it. Sorry, I do all the talking, so I like Andrew to do some talking.
There you go.
I make him do it. I don't make him.
You do it.
But it's like, well, it's just.
Right.
Because I feel like as the chair, I do so much talking.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll just read the whole thing, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Certificate of Adoption, Board of Selectmen, Town of Millville, Massachusetts. A resolution adopting the Town of Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update, whereas the Town of Millville established a committee to prepare the Town of Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update. And whereas the Town of Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update contains several potential future projects to mitigate potential impacts from natural hazards in the Town of Millville, and whereas duly noticed public meetings were held by the local hazard mitigation planning team on April 20th, 2022, and April 27th, 2022. And whereas the Town of Millville authorizes responsible departments and/or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan, and now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Millville Board of Selectmen adopts the Town of Millville Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update in accordance with MGL 40, Section 4, or the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Millville, adopted and signed this date. I don't know, I read that last part.
And that's it? Do we need to make a?
So you make a motion, you vote on it, and then you sign it.
Make a motion to adopt this.
Good job, Andrew. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye.
Excellent.
That's great.
Which coffee? Do you want to pick a coffee?
I know that's someone to sign.
Okay.
No risk, all reward with that.
That's right.
Okay. And then the other thing was ARPA funds update. You can give it to him, and then I can pass it over. So update of spending to date.
Yeah, so I'll take the lead, Sarah, how's that? So we're going to come to you next meeting with more, you know, something to hold in your hand to look at.
Yeah.
But just so you know, we've got about 950 was awarded to the town. We expect even as soon as today, I don't know it for sure, but they were distributing today the balance of what was due the various municipalities. So we would receive, and by next meeting, I expect to say, geez, we got our final 316,000 in of the 950, okay? What we've spent to date, I think we've spent in the accounting records, which we have, 180 grand is about, you know, I'm giving you ballpark. Very round numbers. We've spent 180 grand, which includes the 55 grand that was set aside for the asbestos remediation at BMR, okay? So that's reflected as if it's been spent. It's been put into a separate fund account, if you will. But we only pay a portion of that. There are five bills we get from BMR. Each bill has a fifth of that in it, so.
You've been covered.
We've done one or two fifths.
Yep.
And we haven't spent, like, you've, you set aside, I remember, reports. We'll give you back your reports where you had authorized things. So what we haven't spent so far, but you've already approved, and I'll just run down the list quickly, is about, it's about 90 grand to 100 grand.
Yep.
Plus balance of ARPA administrator salary. So somewhere in the neighborhood, 175 grand already committed. And so what I would say is 350 in total has been spent or committed, leaving a balance of 600 to commit and spend. Okay, how's that? And the commitment is what I refer to as what the Board of Selectmen have approved. For example, you recently approved the building permit, automate, you know, the online permitting, that was 12 grand and change. You've approved 10 grand for the senior center van, which may or may not come through on that grant application they did. You approved 10 grand for the niche app inspection, which is part and parcel of the, you know, all that's being done to get the town, old town hall figured out. 25 grand on the salt shed, you know, there's some drafting of RFPs and so forth. And we don't have specs and things like that, but that, there's drafts underway and we're working on that. And we have through the end of '24 to spend that money, basically. And when, you know, there's site remediation by the Highway Department, that sort of stuff. So it's when the time is right. There was 30 grand put in for Board of Health PP&amp;E, and I don't think we're going to spend much of that, but that's what's been committed. You know, we spent half of what was committed for the water consultant of, I think you committed 25 grand. And there were some server upgrades for the town hall here in that, you know, where the Wizard of Oz sits behind that door. So those are the things that have been committed. Some things that will come down the pipeline will be engineering. Joe's gone. We expect to get a quote for engineering of the old town hall repairs that we've identified, which would include the roof repair, put in a bathroom upstairs, fix the basement floor, do cleanup and so forth. And that'll be somewhere in the neighborhood, I don't know what, but 25 to plus grand for the stamped engineering. So we're getting a quote on that shortly. We don't have anything in there for the Police Department repairs, but that was one of the potential things that have been talked about. Also, old town, other old town hall stuff, as well as other building stuff, was in some of the original thing that you had reviewed many months ago on the other facilities. What you might get brought forward to you soon will be a request for the library furnace, HVAC system. That's been on the dance, that's been on the potential dance card for years.
On the Capitol.
Capitol has seen it. It was part of an application, the last time the Green Community Committee, when it existed, put forward an application. It included HVAC system for that, and that was turned, that whole thing was turned down. And that piece of it was specifically identified as not very attractive for the Green Community grant granters, okay? It wasn't saving enough energy, frankly. But I went over there today, met with Chief Librarian Dave Maloney, whose lovely wife was here tonight. And he expects to get a quote for replacement of the existing HVAC unit upstairs, which will include AC and all of that, with a modern one. Still oil-fired, not propane-fired, which is what the green people want to see, but using the current oil system for 15 grand. So I expect that will come to you soon, because they could probably want to do it before it gets too cold. Likewise, I spoke to the superintendent, he contacted me. Their heat distribution control system at MES, there's an expression for it I can't use, but let's just say it failed. And so they're going to need to replace that. He's getting some quotes for that, doesn't know if it, if it's above the threshold of a capital item, it's the town's burden. If it's below it, it's BMR's burden. So it might be something that comes forward to the, for, and I think that's a good ARPA type of an item, right? And I think the strategy you're going to get into, and I don't mean to segue to the one or the other items, but talking about, you know, the upcoming, a potential need for a fall town meeting or not. Historically, the key things of fall town meetings has been, have been capital items. But the strategy from, seems to be that ARPA is a great solution in the short term for those types of things. So anyway, who knows what will come through the pipeline. So we'll give you more specifics on a sheet of paper or two for your next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, sounds good. Great.
And just a quick question. So you said it was like 650 left roughly?
600 left. Yes, 350 has been spent or committed.
350, okay.
Okay. Which is a healthy dose. It has to be committed where, a contract signed by the end of calendar '24. So still two years plus to go to spend that money. And I think the town's being pretty wise about how it's going about spending it, frankly, compared to some other towns that I've seen.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? Don't you think?
I agree, I do. I really do.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad we're.
The only other piece that I didn't include in there, I'm sorry, was there were some commitments, and I guess it might have been reflected in the numbers already that Tara sent around, was a recent payroll where we had some of the police bonus items to be covered for ARPA. There was one piece that's in that, the number I gave you. There might be some more yet to happen.
Yep, there was a police wages, 7,500.
Yep.
Nothing paid so far.
I know, I told Chief Poop, I'm like, gee, we appointed a police officer last meeting, now this meeting, it's raining new police officers in Millville.
She's doing a good job.
I don't know where you find them, but you're doing a great job.
Yeah, they're good qual, really good candidates, too.
Yeah, they are.
It's terrific people.
All right, great. Anything else on ARPA?
I think that's good.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, see ya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go back up to the top. So to correspondence.
You had asked about an item that came through.
I got an email that I was like.
And I had gotten it too, but I didn't, it really, I'll just say, it's a notice of filing and public hearing that came in from N-Star Gas Company, EverSource, where they're presenting to state bodies a three-year energy efficiency plan. So that's what that correspondence is. And it identifies if one wants to comment about their plan or review it, there are links and so forth. Not something that, in my view, is critical to the Town of Millville at this stage. But I will say, I did get correspondence direct to me late this afternoon that's not in your packet, I didn't even copy anything. And I have it as a TA report, but it really is, I could argue it's correspondence, and it relates to utilities. Came in from Bob Moran, National Grid, okay? And so what the R. Representative from National Grid is recommending to folks in town who haven't opted into the Millville's Energy Aggregation Program, that they probably should do that, because our energy aggregation program has our basic rate in this is 11 cents per kilowatt hour. And National Grid in November's rate is going to be triple that.
Whoa.
Okay, and the explanation is, you know, the global energy crisis, and fueled by the war in Ukraine, high inflation, capacity constraints in the region, and so, you know, they've got the standard things. But what it means, an electric customer of National Grid, the standard typical residential electric customer who uses 600 kilowatt hours in a month, was paying 179 bucks for that service last year, should expect to pay 293, or an increase of 115, $115 a month, that alone. So if you opt in, you'll get the cheap rate for the service piece, not the distribution piece, but the service piece. So we'll, we'll have more details for your next meeting, because this came through, and we'll be sure. I know we had it on the website, I just want to make sure we've more prominently displayed that. We'll also include, he had an attachment, which is from National Grid, which they call Winter Customer Saving Initiative. And it identify, has some links, and identifies some ways you can reduce energy. You know, they're pushing, you get the home energy audit and that sort of thing, and you can save some money, ways to manage your bills, and also ways to get assistance, you know, actual dollars assistance should you be, should you qualify. So we'll get that up there on the website as well. So two things will go up. One, how you can avail yourselves of the energy aggregation program that the town is on, and two, this, you know, sort of guideline, how to maybe save some energy and save dollars or access dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so meeting minutes. And then for the 16th, I'm sorry, September 6th and August 15th. I do not see any issues with either one. Andrew?
Yep. So, excuse me. So for the meeting minutes of September 6th, it was on Policies and Procedures Update. So the, I believe it's the 11th sentence, if I counted correctly in that paragraph. The BOs would like any requests to allow the town to see, wait, sorry. The, okay. The BOs would like any requests to speak with Town Council to go through the Town Administrator. Just, I feel.
Yeah, we did talk about that, but then we backed off, I thought.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, because I wasn't, because I don't feel like, there are certain situations where you don't want a blanket statement of that.
Yeah.
So.
I would just strike the sentence.
Yeah, that's fine. So that was the only thing on this, on these meeting minutes. Do you want me to just go to the second one?
Yeah.
It's just another little tidbit, so. Under, under, appointments, under resignation. So I think we should just put in the full, the person's full name.
Oh, Samantha, Samantha Sam.
I feel like it might be more formal.
Yes.
So that was the other thing, and that's all I have.
Richard, did you see any? I know I didn't.
No, they look pretty good.
I know.
I mean, if Andrew, Andrew finds them all, I gotta say.
Doesn't make you lax, though, you still review them with your eagle eye.
You know, of course, of course, but, you know, I trust Andrew's judgment on those things. He is good on those things.
So we want a motion with changes?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 15th, 2022, and September 26th, September 6th, 2022, with the noted changes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. Okay, great.
Do you want to sign the last pages of those? And I'll just make the changes, because those changes won't impact.
It's not, it's shattering.
Okay, and then what's the, oh, the Friends of the Millville Toll Road is what we're?
Yes, and, and.
Did we have any departments?
All departments have reviewed and approved it at this point, yep.
No, 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 the, on the agenda.
He's on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, no. Okay, just double check. Okay.
So, and that's for October 15th, if I remember that correctly.
August 15th, and then September 6th.
No, 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 I mean the toll road.
Toll Road is October 15th. Rain date, October 22nd. 8 to 1 p.m.
Okay, let's see if I can get that. Merge things together too quickly before going to the.
I think you have my folder of signatures as well. I'll keep that.
So, so the toll date, that was done by this Highway Surveyor at this point?
Yes, he signed it.
Okay.
It's here. And it's available for your signature as well, once you approve it.
Okay.
That's, yes, I am. Well, no, actually, it's all signed.
They're there.
Okay, so great.
So I'll make a motion to approve the parade slash toll day permit for the Friends of the Millville Library for October 15th with a rain date of 22nd. October 22nd, thank you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. It's 9, today's the 16th. There you go. Okay. I thought this was going to be a really long meeting. We're actually cruising pretty nicely.
I know, you're moving through it.
Jinx us.
You might stay away.
I know, I might make it. So the next one, new business, 7F. So preliminary special town meeting considerations and planning. So I thought we should at least talk about having a special town meeting, which we usually have when it's, you know, November, December-ish timeframe. As Peter mentioned kind of earlier, our strategy on spending money has been to use other people's money first, which I think is a good strategy. So we should spend ARPA funds first. So I can't think of any reason to have a special town meeting, but I don't know if, can you, either of you think? know if, can you, either of you think of a reason?
Nothing on the itinerary.
So the, two things, one, there are no bylaw changes forthcoming, and I think you, the general consensus has proven to be, rather save those for regular town meeting anyway, right? So then, absent any capital items, because we're spending other people's money, the only other thing might be budget challenges, but I know of none.
Great.
And I anticipate none. And to the extent we get in a bind, for example, one of the things that could, that got us in a bind a little bit last year was repair of a fire truck beyond, you know, the, far beyond the budget. That, I would say, might want to be dealt with using ARPA money, rather than go into a special town meeting and say, we'd like to supplement the budget of the fire department by X dollars, you know, that sort of thing. And that would be the only one. I don't know of any others that are exposed at this stage, in any shape or form.
Then we can skip the special town meeting, because we did have to have that second one in June with all the free cash certification, so I kind of was like hoping that we didn't need to do it this time. So, great?
Yeah, so the only other thing might be if the schools come forward with something. For example, if they get MSBA approval, I think the 270, 270, if they get the letter, that MSBA says, we accept your letter of interest and we want to fund you, you now need to proceed, you got 270 days to have a town meeting where there's approval of, you know, feasibility study in the amount of X, and the X is something that's in a state of
Moving, moving target.
Moving target, how's that? Yeah. So there's that. I don't know whether there might be other things that the school might say, you know, and in those situations where the school, let's take, for example, what I referred to earlier is this control system of the heating eight zones of this, up there, MES. Let's say it came in and it takes 50 grand to replace it. Prior to ARPA, the process would be, they'd say, we put this forward to you, and the town has to have a town meeting within 45 days to approve it, and if the town doesn't do it, then the town, by not having a town meeting, basically has approved it by taking no action. So that would be the type of thing, before ARPA. Now with ARPA, whatever happens might be something ARPA related. So, I'll stop talking on that.
No, that's fine. Okay. Alright, so at this time then we'll not have a special town meeting unless something else changes. And I did review the survey results, Peter, and you are right, that people want to keep the annual town meeting for big business, and the special town meeting is just for emergencies. The majority rules, that's what people wanted, so that's what we will do. Okay, so 7I, consideration of a board of selectmen department newsletter. So I don't know if you all remember this with the, when we did the surveys, but one of the respondents was, not one, but there were several people who were like, hey, I actually don't go on Facebook, I don't have internet, I don't go on the website, I haven't heard anything about town ever. This is the first time I've seen outreach or anything from anyone, you know, thank you so much, but, like, people aren't hearing about things. So I was wondering if we wanted to go around and get updates on things, or at least let people know. So, for example, like, I think it might be worthwhile to put in there that we were able to recoup 100% of the funds from the Justin Cole incident. And people might want to know, like, gee, we have, like, great insurance, Peter did a great job working with them, so we were able to recoup 100% of that. I actually wrote down something else. Oh, the guideline on energy that Peter just discussed. Like, if people aren't going on the website, they're not gonna know. We could say, hey, there's an opportunity in terms of saving money on your energy bills, stop by the town hall, they have the information there. Make sure you sign up for the, what was it called, the Millville Energy Aggregation Program, because you can save money there too. So just things like that, I don't know if there's other, I kind of just rattled off the top of my head, three things. Maybe just say, we're not having a special town meeting, in case you're like, when's the meeting? There isn't one. We could give an update on the help that we've gotten from Representative Soder and Senator Fatman, which they've always been great to us. And so, I don't know, any other little things like that? So you don't have to come up with everything right now, but I thought we should maybe put one together to get out, say by some, sometime in November, like before the holidays.
You thinking like a one-page newsletter?
Yeah, just one page.
Green card?
Exactly, like the.
Survey?
Yeah. Maybe we'll do orange for fall.
Possibly quarterly?
Yeah, I was thinking quarterly or a couple, you know, at least twice a year. I just, I was shocked that some people are like, this, I've not heard anything from the town ever. And that's on us to do better, we're not, that's. So, okay. And then, I don't know if we want to ask the department heads, like, if they have anything they want to put in there? Like, do we want to say, like, hey, we're still missing people for some boards, is an opportunity for the finance committee, like, I know there's an opening on the finance committee, there's an opening on capital planning.
Yeah.
So, we want to maybe say, hey, we have some openings, you stop by the town hall for information, or you can go to the library and use, things like that. Okay. So why don't, I'll have to watch this again and see what I just rattled off, because I don't remember.
I missed item two, I didn't write it down, I'm gone. But with coal matter, we had energy aggregation, no special town meeting, we'll get some department heads, but you had something else in there.
Oh, like they, well, how Senator Fatman and Representative Soder.
Assistance.
Like the assistance that they've given us so far. So we got 25,000 from coming for a police.
I mean, it's not, no, nothing's signed on the dotted line, but we, it's pending, and we, we, we're told it's coming. But I've not signed anything.
Okay, so maybe, alright, so maybe we don't put that in there yet?
Well, we might, we'll see.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Anything else on the newsletter? Otherwise, I'll move on.
Sounds good.
Alright. Um, continuation of policies and procedures. So I was looking at the vision and goals, and I think, I don't know. I thought the vision statement was kind of weird. Like, whereas the town of Millville is a foothold and passive manufacturing town, whereas Millville's centered around the Blackstone Valley, I guess, I don't understand that's visionary. Like, I think it would be visionary to talk about, it's a historical town, and we want to make sure that we leverage.
Yeah, so down, it's the now, therefore, is where they, that's their payoff.
And vision in Millville, that preserves and protects its natural, historic, and cultural assets.
And so, just so you know, in this, what's in your packet, or the thing, the changes, and one of the things was, I, I did find the actual complete, already adopted mission and vision statement of the BOS policy.
Oh, did you?
So, I filled out the missing line, or part of the line that's there. And then I included in here the vision statement and the, the goals of the Millville Master Plan of 2018. But I, I didn't want to put my, interject my thoughts on what made sense out of that. I think that's more for you all to make the most sense of. But I think there's some meaty stuff in there. If you could condense it, or wanted to condense it, you might be able to, that's, so that's why that's in there, and that's why I didn't draft anything.
So I think for the the goals I was okay with, I guess, the, I mean, I would write the vision statement differently, but if everybody else likes it, I don't want to, I don't want to change it just so, just for me, if everybody's okay with it. So then, so then maybe in the policies, we should reference the vision and goals and point to the master plan from here, so that people.
So you're really, you're referencing and looking to be consistent with?
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, I can come up with some words for that, so for your next time, we'll nail that down.
Yeah. So that's it. Andrew and Richard, do you have anything else? You don't have to do what I said, we can, if you guys both have something, another idea, that's completely fine.
I, I like the referencing, that works, makes it straightforward and.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And then the appointment policy, I liked that everyone came tonight, that was amazing. I think that's really good, so we can ask some questions. So.
So the only change there is what's highlighted, right? Because this was a whole, this was an open item from the last meeting, which talked about the holdover status. So I, I put some wording in there that, and I added not to exceed 180 days of holdover status. So you hadn't picked the timeframe, but I put one in there, see if it sticks.
Yep. And it's not ironclad to.
Correct.
If we need to.
Right, it's a policy.
Well, no, no, like even in the policy, the way, it is the desire of the board, which is good, because.
Right. Right, this would be optimal.
Yeah, you want optimal, but at the same time, you don't want to box yourself in either, which isn't great, but.
I know, I would prefer, like, hard and fast rules, but we.
Yeah, I know.
But then, you'll need to break it, and you'll be like, then you broke your own rule. Did.
And then, so Jane did look at the debit card policy and forms, and so I adopted many of her, she provided a lot of input, and I adopted those into this finished product. I didn't highlight what the changes were, but trust me that it reflects her input as much as I thought was appropriate, and it is a good policy. And it does retain, it adds an attachment B, which is a debit card voucher, which is something that she, she's created or lifted from another community. So it's got two things, one, somebody, if they use the card, to be a user of the card, they got to sign attachment A, that cardholder agreement, and then anytime they use it, they got to do the voucher.
Sign out, yeah.
Okay? So I think it's a good, good policy as it's now written. It's an improvement over what was there, which was a pretty good policy to begin with.
Okay.
Alright.
My big thing is if Jane's gonna do that, and I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, yep. And Tim did look at the policy of the meetings, he had no real changes, he said he could do it, and in fact, he did it tonight with allowing for a remote participation while this meeting was happening. So he continues to prove his genius as the cable guy here for the town of Millville.
He give you 20 bucks before the meeting or something?
Oh, no, no, I'd like to keep him going with us. And then the last thing is the disposition, there was a recommendation on the auction, so I added the last piece.
Okay.
Which I think is broad enough, but specific enough.
Okay.
Welcome any.
One quick question on the debit card policy, did we ever figure out if there are people's names on the cards specifically?
No, yeah, no, it's just town of Millville, just town of Millville, that's right. And, and it's one card, and it's really, it's limited to 1,000 bucks anyway, and it's a debit card, so.
So we're careful about it.
So I think the next thing would be just to have all this put into the big book, and then we adopt the policies.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I think we're there.
Fair enough.
Enough.
Alright, this has been so much work, I'm, when do we start looking at these, Andrew? Thank you, 87? It's been, I feel like.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Couple rounds.
Okay.
Alright. Public forum, Chief Coop, anything you'd like to contribute?
Um, no, thank you. I don't think I have anything right now, I think I was.
You can leave if you want to.
Yeah, I didn't know, I mean, uh.
You can always leave if you want to.
I hope you stick around, you know, to say, do you have the back contentious meeting?
Okay.
I think you're all set, I'll give out, yeah.
You're welcome to stay, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome. So selectmen reports, Richard?
I have.
You're at the library?
Yes, I, that was, I was gonna say, I had something very exciting. So there was a dedication, and it was a very nice, very nice setting, and got to spend a little more time meeting some new faces that I haven't seen much of in town. Very beautiful bench that was dedicated, so.
Great.
It was, it was quite a, it was quite a get-together, and you got to see my speech on TV, all 55 minutes worth, so. I, I'm known to be a speaker, so I try to retain that, you know. But that's what I have in my books.
Okay. Andrew?
Nope.
I do have to add, he has a new bowtie, and he's stepping up his game, so. Andrew does have that going on.
Yeah, soon the tuxes.
No, I really don't have anything, but I'll just further on to, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, because Evelyn was one of the people that sold me on Millville, not, not directly, but I was doing due diligence, watching meetings and so forth, and there I was, before I had agreed to come on board, and I'm watching a meeting where she's standing, standing right there in front of the finance committee, trying to push the library budget at the time. And I thought, and I'm watching it, and I called my wife in, I said, look at this, this lady is just, you know, just articulate, she's like 95, 96 years old, how the heck she do it? And so I met her, the first town meeting, it was the second, it was the next, the first week I had started in Millville. And I saw her at the town meeting, and I said, hi, how are you? I watched you on, you know, on YouTube, and I just think you're great, you remind me of my grandmother and all that. So I mentioned that to Diane Lockwood, and she said, well, do you know about her husband? And I said, no, was he like a war guy or something? She said, well, he wrote a book. And so she goes to the, she has a safe here in the back room, she goes to the safe, pulls out a box, and in the, in the box, carefully wrapped up, is the book, a book that he had written. And she said, you can borrow that, Peter. I said, no, no, no. So I bought the book, and I got the book, so I haven't started reading it, but I'd like, I couldn't make that event, but I understand she's in assisted living on the South Shore, which is where I live, so I helped to visit her and bring the book to get it autographed.
Oh, that's awesome.
She's a sweet lady. She's, and she's, you know, Millville has those types of folks here, it's pretty amazing to me.
I think it's important for the viewers to know of this meeting, that, you know, everybody makes a difference, no matter what you volunteer for. And, you know, Evelyn was, is quite a woman. I got a little bit of a history on her, and the work that she's done with the library, absolutely incredible. And it's only here because of her, so fortunate that my kids will be able to enjoy it, and future generations will be able to enjoy that, and it's because of her commitment, so. Everybody here has a chance to commit to the town and provide something. Truly incredible.
All set.
Thank you for the appointment, this evening.
Yep, thank you.
Good job getting it. Talking that guy into it, Chief, we'll talk to you.
Thank you, dear.
Item's not reasonably anticipated for you?
I have nothing, no.
Okay. Our next meeting will be Monday, October 3rd, we already did signatures, so I will make these motions just to be faster. I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C 30A 21A2 to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief. I further move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C 30A 21A3 to discuss strategy relative to pending litigation, BM RSD slash Millville versus N5, NV5 et al., where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. And we will only return to open meeting to adjourn. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Jennifer is aye. Okay. We just have to wait for him to disconnect, though. We just have to wait for him to disconnect, though.